Okay, welcome to the South Dundas regular meeting with his team and staff and guests for Monday, November 27, 2023. I have a motion that we reconvene from a closed session into open session at 6:12 PM. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Smith. All in favor? Carried. Okay. Moving into confirmation of agenda. Sorry. I will have a motion that it be resolved that council direct administration to carry out all actions as specified in the closed session minutes. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Smith. All in favor? Carried. And now moving to number three, confirmation of agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments? Seeing none, I have a motion that be resolved that the council of the municipality of South Dundas approve the agenda as presented. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by deputy mayor St Pierre. All in favor? Disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Seeing none, move to number five, adoption of minutes. I have a motion that it be resolved that the minutes of the following meetings, including closed session minutes, be adopted as presented, meetings of November 13, 2023. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Smith. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we can move to item number six, delegations. So first off tonight, we have three delegations. And first up, Dave Connors, president of the Friends of the Kreisler Farm Battlefield is here with other members of the association. So welcome. Welcome. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us here and thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and explain to you who we are and what we do. I'm here with, as was introduced, I am Dave Connors, the president. I'm here with a couple of other members, Kim and Les McGinnis behind me as well. Here's the outline of the quick presentation I'm going to give. First of all, we're going to talk about the history, just a brief history of what the Battle of Kreiser Farm is. I'm not sure how much everybody knows about it, so we'll just do a quick history of it, why it's important, why it's an important thing in South Dundas. And then we'll talk about our group, Friends of Kreiser Farm Battlefield, who we are and what we do. And the last thing is how council can help us. So the Battle of Kreiser Farm was part of the War of 1812, which was a war we had with the US. And it was a major battle in the Battle of, War of 1812. It wasn't just a skirmish, or it was a, there was a lot of battles that happened in Southern Ontario in the US, but the battle that happened here was considered a key battle to the war and possibly a turning point in the war. I'm going to read bits of you from a report that we've put together that we're going to leave with you guys as information if you need it in the future. The Battle of the War of 1812, named after local resident, justice of the peace and MLA for Upper Canada, John Kreisler, a lieutenant in the Dundas militia who was promoted to captain during the war. It was at his farmhouse where the officers met to plan their course of action. The course of action agreed upon was to engage the Americans on a field of their own choosing. The battle occurred on November 11, 1813, just east of the village of Morrisburg, located between and near the present day Marina and Upper Canada Village. You have to point out that for you that don't know the battle, where the actual battle happened is underwater now, was flooded during the seaway. So at this battle, 4,000 American troops met an allied force of 800. And the one interesting thing about it is it was an allied force, which was truly Canadian. It was made up of British regulars, which had made up most of it, but it also included local militia from this area, Votager from Quebec, Canadian infantry of light fencibles, and also Mississauga native and indigenous representatives as well. So it was truly a united force that fought the Americans at Kreiser Farm and were victorious, ended up being victorious. The attack orchestrated by Americans in a bid to capture Montreal and cut off shipping to the Great Lakes-St Lawrence area was part of a double pincer movement. The other attack had targeted the Chateaugue River in October. Kreiser's farm has become known as the battle that saved Canada. So the British, the American strategy was to come up from the south and along the river and surround Montreal, captured and cut off all supplies to the rest of Canada. And both at Kreiser Farm and Chateaugue, they were defeated, and that was the end of that American campaign. So you can see the importance of the battle that happened just near here. Why is it important? Well, one, we just talked about how it was critical in the war and in some ways, saving Canada. If the Americans had won, we could have had a whole different, we could have been in a different situation here. The other important reason for it was that there were a lot of local people that fought in it. There were local residents and farmers that were in the militia units that partook in that battle. And you can see here, here's an example, a sample of some of the first Dundas militia. And you can see a lot of names in there that are still around in the area right now. You see Ben Allen, Shaver, there's Merkley's, Castleman. So there's a lot of descendants that are still around this area now that had fought there and had relatives fight there. Friends of Kreiser Farm, who are we? So we're a nonprofit volunteer organization whose objective is to maintain the site there, the historic site, the battlefield, as well as to educate people on what happened at that spot. So preserve history through awareness and education. How we do that mainly is through reenactments. So every two years, we have a reenactment at the Battle, Kreiser Farm Battlefield. And there's also the battle, the BMB, what's it called, is the Battle Memorial Building. So there is a little museum there that has a lot of artifacts and tells the story of the battle that's at the base of the hill. That building this year was manned from all of July and August. And we were happy to see that we ended up getting almost 2,000 visitors into that building, which is good because it's quite a distance from the Upper Canada Village, so people made a separate trek to see it. Who is the group of the Friends of Kreiser Farm? They come from all walks of life. Currently sitting on the executive, as well as ancillary support, are a number of people who bring to the group a host of skills and knowledge. Two students studying history, one at Carlton and one at RMC Kingston, currently deployed at Gagetown. A retired member of the Black Watch, a retired glen, an author and retired lawyer, a reporter, community living worker, descendants of the Dundas militia with roots dating back to the United Empire loyalists. And they don't all live just in South Dundas. They're from South Dundas, Chesterfield, Winchester, Spencerville, Cornwall, Van Cleek Hill. And those are the active members. We also have a membership of over, probably about 120 now, that come from all across The Friends of Kreiser Battlefield were formed in 2000, and the formation came about because of the parks were wanting to shut down the BMB, close it down. So this group came together to keep it open and preserve it. How we operate, very quickly, our main funding comes from gate receipts from the reenactments. So we put on the reenactments every two years, and it varies quite a bit because, as you can tell, it's an outdoor thing, so it's very weather dependent. So on a good weekend, we might get 3,000 visitors or so. On a bad rainy weekend, we maybe get more, like 1,000. So we, that's our main source of income. We also have, we do a raffle usually every year where we have donated items from, Upper Canada Village has been very generous to donate quilts and things like that that we can raffle. Last year, I don't know if you heard, we had a local craftsman donate an old Kentucky rifle that was all handcrafted. That one went really well. They sold, those tickets all sold out. So we have that as our main sources of income. How can South Dundas help us, council? I guess the main thing we'd ask is that you be aware of us and include us in any advertising campaigns you're doing. If you have, if you get funding from somewhere that you're going to do a campaign on history in South Dundas, that we're included in it. Or if you're doing brochures on what to see in South Dundas, we'd like to be included in those. And I know the last little while has been a lot better, but I know back quite a ways there was a definite absence of our presence. And I think some of it also had to do with, a lot of people think we're Upper Canada Village. And sometimes we'd call and say, well, why didn't, why aren't we included? And it would be, well, we have Upper Canada Village in there. Well, we're not really Upper Canada Village. We work with them, but we're a separate entity, run separately. And the other thing we thought of was that we always have, especially at reenactments, we always have a problem getting personnel to help out with it. So again, if you have extra, you know, like students, or, we could tell you right now when the reenactment is and when we'd need them. But we've had a hard time getting people to help out with it. So we've actually had to cut off some of the activities that we'd planned because we didn't have bodies to run those activities. And a lot of times, it's just somebody to sit there and make sure, you know, for example, we've, I think the last two, we wanted to have a, like a dress up tent. We have all this old 1812 men's and ladies stuff to wear, and there's always a lot of interest in putting stuff on and getting pictures. But we haven't been able to do it because we have nobody that we can dedicate to sitting there watching it. So that would be our requests. Here's just a few, oh, sorry. One thing I forgot to mention, there's a big part of our, of what we do is, we have a November 11 ceremony. And we've been doing this for a while, and the picture on the left is from that November 11 ceremony. And the November 11 ceremony first started as a very small, there was a few members like Carol and Jim Brownell started at the MPP from the area with Colonel Bill Shearing and a few others, Kim and Les. It started off as a very small thing. It was a descendants ceremony, but it became a lot more popular. It's always at 9:00 AM. And later on, it became popular enough that we had Stephen Harper, when he was prime minister, show up for it. We had a big event then. We've had a high ranking people from the Canadian Army come to it. We had Vice Admiral Sir Timothy Lawrence, who is the husband of Princess Anne. He came for the, one of the ceremonies. And now it's, now it's fairly, very well attended. A few years ago, in 2018, we cleaned out, one of our members, Bob Irvin, cleaned out those old cannons that are up there, those big 24 pound cannons. And since then, we've been firing them off as part of the ceremony. So it adds a lot to it. Until now, it's well attended and we stream it on Facebook. So there, yeah, you can see a few pictures. There's the ceremony. There's one of the pictures of the summer. That's where everyone gathers on the hill to watch the reenactment. And there's a picture of the reenactment at the bottom. And that's it.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Dave. Thanks for sharing those informations. Yeah, so I'll make a few comments. Actually, I've been kind of involved over the last year since I've been elected. I've been to two Remember Day events, and with a quarter charge in those cannons, it's quite loud. And I just hope nobody thinks we're firing at them across the river. But the ceremony, the paralympic is a crucial part of South Dundas' Remember Day celebrations, which are very well attended. So I thank you for that. And I attended an executive meeting of the Friends of Kreiser Battlefield earlier in the spring. And obviously, some work has started. We're working with MP Eric Duncan to restore the monument. Is it a little bit of disarray on the hill, to say the least? So some work is undertaken, as Eric's been working hard with all their Senate staff. So it's another project that he's helping work on, and we can see that's in fruition. Totally am supportive of your group. We have a grants and donation program where you can ask for personnel help and that type of thing. So there's an application for that, so you can go online, fill it up, or ask Director Jansen for some help on that, you know, requesting, you know, somebody, people or students or whatever you may be. So we have an application for that, that we can approve, for sure. And as well, at the county level, actually, we've just, and it's taken some thunder from the deputy mayor, we just approved, there's a celebration in Cornwall with their local society with the original landing 100, 240 years ago, right? As you may well know about. So this potentially through the counties, and we can help you with an application through some counties with some funding perhaps. And I was even thinking of one of the videos Tara Fitzpatrick does through the tourism group, there could be opportunities there. So yeah, let's work together and support your group and make it bigger and better and all the tourism we can get to South Dundas is great.
I'd just like to say that we have applied numerous times to the counties for funding for our reenactment, and it's turned down every time.
Okay. That's good to know. Well, we have some history because we just approved the Historical Society of Cornwall to get some funding for the landing ceremony.
I think our money might go home this year for our reenactment, but this 2024.
Point proven. Anyway, deputy mayor and I are now in that council, so we could certainly be supportive of that ask at the time. Other comments to add on, deputy mayor?
At the three year, I, you know, I attended my, you know, first Remember Day ceremony at the hill, and I will say them cannons are very impactful when they go off. You know, when you're watching a movie and they light the cannons and there's like, you know, the flint, and you're, yeah, that's not what happens. They're instant booms. Yeah, it's quite amazing. No, I think this is something that we need to continuously preserve and recognize. I think it's wonderful that you've taken on that initiative, fully supportive of the program. I also think there may be some opportunities for our students when we hire them to, hopefully we can get them engaged for the weekend to help out and whatever else, other inclined services you need, please do not hesitate to help. And I'll echo what Mayor Broad said. But one of the key things too, and just aside from the funding, Tara Kirkpatrick at the counties does a wonderful job on doing these videos, and I think that would, that would be perfect for the battle and the advertisement of that. So please reach out and let us, let us know when you do reach out so we can continue to support your program, for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? Oh, okay. Yeah, I've seen that. Well, thank you, Dave, Kim and Les for attending tonight. Thank you very much. That was excellent.
Just a short synopsis of who and what we are and what we do. If you have trouble sleeping, then just.
Thank you. So next up on our delegations is Grant Match.
Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here to have this opportunity to tell you how South Dundas can maximize government grants and funding with Grant Match. I'm just going to share my screen and take you through a very brief presentation, and feel free to ask questions at any point.
Okay, we're just making sure we've got everything set up on our end here. We can hear you fine, so that's good.
Great. And can you see my screen?
We can see you, we can see you now. Go ahead and share.
Oh, okay, hold on. Let me, let me try that again. Just a second here. Just bear with me for a minute here. There we go. Can you see my screen?
No, we do not.
Oh, dear. Okay. I did hit share screen, and it was showing me that it was, but perhaps it's not working. I can certainly, keep in mind that I can certainly walk through the presentation quite easily, and I will send you the presentation in its entirety, so you'll have that for review as well.
We do have a copy of it, so we'll just follow along as you talk.
Oh, okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So just by way of a brief agenda, I want to talk about how we're government funding strategists. That quite sets us apart from one-off grant writers in our methodology, our relationship that we have with you, and our ability to be perspective in everything we do. Research identification and securing funding, and how all of those elements are so equally important, and how we're able to be so efficient and effective in those areas. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the Grant Match partnerships and success stories. I'll just spend a brief amount of time on municipal funding highlights, the recent ones that have passed, you know, just to whet your appetite to see, you know, did we apply for these? Could we have? Are these types of things of interest to us? And then keep in mind now, the way I go along, that everything we do is strictly success or performance fee based, so there is no risk or upfront cost to you. And I also want to make mention before I get underway to thank Tim Melz for inviting me today, and Tia. We, Tim enjoyed the benefits of our relationship and services at South Glengarry. So thank you for having me come forward at South Dundas now. So at Grant Match, we've been around for over 25 years now. There are 50 of us in the organization right across Canada. We do work with hundreds of municipal clients. Since our inception, we've recovered in excess of 300 million in tax, grants, and incentives. We are, we pride ourselves on our foundation, being our Grant Match software, which is the only comprehensive analytics tool that allows us to streamline the vast array of complicated information out there. So we lay out your projects in a strategy and have them in lockstep over time as these programs come available. And most importantly, we pride ourselves on our relationships. We customize and tailor to your style. So some folks want to be really hands-on, multiple people in users in the software. Other people want to be completely hands-off, having us serve everything up to them. And we really get to be integrated into your culture in these ways. So we do cover the full gamut and cast a wide net. It's right across infrastructure, environmental, socioeconomic, and recreation. Our real ability to be so successful for so long with so many clients is that we're only bringing forward high probability funding opportunities. The way that we can assess out high probability opportunities is our deep fund knowledge of each fund, because they do reoccur, so our knowledge just grows with time. The breadth of knowledge across the funding program, some of the strategy behind it, and as well our extensive expertise and experience with every type of municipal project. So why government funding? You do, of course, have the objective to achieve goals for local taxpayers, keeping yourself ahead of failing infrastructure. One of the many benefits of working with us is that you're always ahead of the curve, not scrambling when there's maybe not enough time or you don't realize the extent of an application. We accelerate disaster response and reduce budget commitments and loans. So essentially, to paint a picture of what working with Grant Match looks like, there's obviously a certain amount of allocated funding out there, and that's, you know, a given. You also have your in-house grant team. The Grant Match advantage, I clearly want to paint this picture, is to bring incremental value. We are here to augment, not displace what you're doing, take things to the next level to ensure that you're capturing every dollar of government funding possible. We do that through the awareness of the right program at the right time. Does my, taking a look, does your team have capacity to take this on? We're there as your right hand arm. And can we develop a winning application? We're only going after high probability funds, and I'll speak to our success rate and what that looks like. And we have the necessary preparation in place, because although you have a single point of contact, your funding specialist, there's a team of folks below that person doing research, analytics, and writing. So we utilize a proactive grant strategy. We look at data, and I'm going to talk to the Grant Match software, just briefly touch on it so you can see how robust our foundation is. We're constantly mapping that against your requirements, your capital budget, your vision, your wish list. And then we plan and prepare to then go ahead and do a comprehensive full proposal development. Very oftentimes, because we are so strategic, we're able to do stacking and pairing, layering in more than one project, program, sorry, for a particular project, offsetting more of the costs. In the stacking case, we're able to layer in a provincial and a federal grant. In the pairing case, those are complementary type grants, like for example, an infrastructure and an environmental. So as I say, we leave no stone unturned, and I'll give you a sense of how many programs we actually look at in a moment. But we do have big inroads and success in affordable housing, environment, human capital, infrastructure, and culture. So our, just to give you a real feeling for how robust the platform is, in our history, we've searched 380,000 companies and organizations, 3.3 trillion in government funding. At any given time, there's about $50 billion in government funding. So regardless of what you're doing, there's always room for improvement. We have the unique ability to pull historical grants, so we can see what projects are being approved for what funds and geographies. This speaks to the incredible horsepower intellectually we're bringing to each and every application. And our software does search over 8,000 programs, both federally and provincially. If you are able to keep up with the slides, broad brush sampling of some of the municipal clients we work with.
Yes, we are with you. Same slide.
What's, I'm sorry?
Yes, we're keeping up with our slides, thank you, Michelle.
Oh, thank you so much, that makes me feel more engaged, because I was starting to feel like I'm reading to myself.
No, it's, we're...
Thank you.
It's perfect, thank you.
And then this is just a sampling, just for speaking to our credentials and credibility about partnerships and some of the private sector corporate clients we work, corporate clients we work with. So a success story on City of Cork, The Lakes, our longest-standing municipal client, gives you a sense of our true value of being strategic. Layering in an affordable housing initiative for a significant dollar approval, a carbon-neutral funding strategy with the Low Carbon Innovation Fund, which reoccurs sometimes under different names time and again, and an economic development for community downtown revitalization, which we've had just an absolute ton of success in. Now, Town of Warwick, and again, I want to really paint the picture in these next two slides, that your size does not preclude the amount of opportunity. About 80% of our clients are small or very small, simply because they can take most advantage of our efforts. Warwick had a $750,000 approval for the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, and include building expansion, revenue generating investment, and fitness programming. So you see some of the diversity that we speak to. Drain Valley, this was a unique strategic fund for active transportation. This one I really want to draw your attention to, this was, we're still awaiting news of approvals for the second round of Green and Inclusive Community Building Fund, but we did have this approval in the first round, which is going on back two, almost a year and a half ago now. But a very small Saskatchewan municipality, for a very large approval. These were exceedingly complex, and I want to point out that although we're seeing more funding come out, it is somewhat exceedingly complex and technical. This one, you had to purchase the RAN software to measure efficiencies of the building, and you had to engage an engineering firm to do so. Keep in mind that we did all of that strictly on a contingency basis, where we owned all the risk. And our success rates in the small and midsize, which this one was just under the limit, just in that limit, were up in the 90% range of approval success. Now, to Town of Princeton, another economic, Pacific Economic Development Canada approval, starts to think, again, you see downtown revitalization, a big theme, socioeconomic benefits, as well a repeated theme. Now, in these programs at the end here, I don't want to, I want to be respectful of your time and recognize that you do have the presentation. You can read through these, I've done, I think, a better job of highlighting them in examples of our success. These are just the types of programs to pique your interest, so that you see, you know, are we engaging in this kind of uptake for our community? Are these the types of projects that we have on the back burner that we could be taking advantage of? And it really gives you a taste for how wide a net we cast. So regardless of your history and your vision, you're going to ensure that you're capitalizing on every type of government grant. So I just kind of scrolled through those. I do want to draw your attention, last two slides here, this one. So really, when you work with GrantMatch, the government's measured that across all organizations, all funds, when applying on your own, the success rate's about 25% on average. Right out of the gate, our success rate is 75%. Plus, you're not having to invest all that time, risk, and resources and maybe not be approved, because we own that risk. And that speaks to the last slide, which is the performance contingency. This strategic relationship with us pulling from our grant library into your strategies, serving up recommendations regardless of how long you go before you're ready for us to execute, you enjoy the benefit of all of these deliverables, and the only time you ever pay us is on successful approval. I also want to point out that we truly, our true value is to bring incremental opportunity, even if we serve up a recommendation that you weren't aware of on a program. You might say, we have the time and the expertise, we're going to go ahead and work on that. So we're here to add value. And that's it for the presentation portion of my meet with you tonight. Any questions or comments for me?
Yes, well, thanks, Ms. Treppi, excellent presentation, glad we can follow along with any issues. Yeah, I'll open it up to my council team here, if they have any questions or comments at this time. Councilor Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for your presentation, I guess my question is just, and maybe staff can answer too. So it says you get a certain percentage of all of the funds received, so I think it's like 10% of the first million and 5% after that. When you say funds received, you just mean the grant portion, because some of these are loan and grant based, so I just want to make sure we're not giving 10% of all the funds received, it's just the grant portion, correct?
It's just the grant portion, yeah. Yeah. And it is, and you said correctly, but I just want to emphasize it is of the approved amount, yes. Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
No, I don't think at this time. Certainly, thank you for the presentation, and I certainly like the opportunity that we can work with you in different ways, because we have some of our directors, Director Jansen for one, he's very involved with applying for grants, so I like that's an opportunity to work together, and then, you know, we're working on some ourselves, and you can work on others. I think it's a good mix of how we can work together to optimize as much grant funding as we can get within the municipality. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you. Have a great rest of your meeting, and so appreciate your time and for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now.
Okay, we'll move to delegation 6C. So we have Michael Matthews from Jacobs Engineering here, discuss our Ontario Structural Inspection Report. Michael, move to the desk and we'll pull up the presentation here.
Thank you very much, everyone. As introduced, my name's Michael Matthews, I work for Jacobs Engineering. We were retained by the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry on behalf of South Dundas to perform biennial bridge and structural culvert inspections for South Dundas. This is part of every two years inspecting each municipal structure that is owned and maintained by the, by South Dundas as part of provincial law, to make sure that the infrastructure is in good health and well managed. So running through some of the slides here today, as part of the inspections, we reviewed and inspected onsite 12 bridges and 21 structural culverts, which are culverts that are larger than three meters throughout South Dundas, and put together inspection reports and recommendations on work to be completed to maintain them in good order. I won't go through the table that's on there right now, I will jump to that at the end of the presentation here. The inspections generally include visual inspection only of the structures in all accessible areas, to make sure that there's no critical faults or worrisome conditions. Overall, just giving a summary of the inspections, on average, the structures were generally in good condition, with one in excellent condition, which means it was replaced within a year or two, and then 18 or so in good condition, 10 in fair, and four in poor. And the average estimated remaining service life of all the structures is about 23. You can see it a little bit heavier on the graph towards the lower remaining service life, that just indicates that many of the structures, although they may be in fair or good condition, are coming up on the end of a typical service life of the structure, which is about 75 years. And that appropriate infrastructure planning should be put in place to make sure that the infrastructure's kept in good clip. Is it going still? There we go. So following the completion of our site reviews and inspection reports for every structure that's on the list, we put together a proposed or tentative 10-year capital plan to assist South Dundas in maintaining the infrastructure. This is a recommendation, not a must, obviously, funding is a big part of the question here, but this is our recommendation in terms of how to proceed forward based on the current condition of the structures that we saw. And the recommendation comes in four different formats. One is recommendations of additional investigations where perhaps the visual inspections didn't tell us everything that you might want to know, if it's an older structure that might need to be evaluated further. Then there's maintenance recommendations, recommendations for rehabilitations to improve and maintain existing structures, and then there's the bigger bulk of the capital costs in there, which is replacing structures that are at the end of their service life. We put together a 10-year capital plan. It's summarized in the table there, but the idea was to spread more or less the capital costs over a 10-year period. It ranges from about, you know, half a million dollars at its lowest up to 2.6, and the highest one on the screen there, and that relates to a bigger structural replacement, which is a single shot more expensive than one sort of construction season. But in general, those numbers can be shifted around as needed. And, yeah, just to give a different look at what our recommended plan included is, so full structural replacements make up the bulk of the capital costs, being about 8.1, with rehabilitation works over the next 10 years being about a million, and then maintenance and investigations being sort of 300K each, for a total recommended plan of 13.6 over a 10-year period. And that is the extent of the engagement that we were put together to do, as well as this presentation here, to answer any questions or any concerns that council might have or anybody else. So I'll flip to the questions slide here, which is just the word, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have. It was a very high-level overview, I'm sure many of you have seen this program come through before and are familiar with it, so didn't want to bore you with too many details, but yeah, open the floor to any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Matthews, for the information. Comments, questions for the council team? Councilor Ward?
I assume the detailed report would say which bridges...
Yes, of course.
Okay, yeah. No, I just wondered, because, you know, I think council, 13.6 million over the next 10 years is quite a bit of money, and that's just on bridges and culverts, so it'll be interesting to see that report whenever Jeff brings that, to see which bridges are in dire need of replacement.
It certainly is. Often, there is a gap in what recommended infrastructure spending and actual infrastructure spending is, so I can certainly agree with that, but we want to make our recommendations so that it can be best managed by South Dundas and any other municipality.
Dr. Hyman.
So, to Councilor Ward, so yes, I do have the final report, however, it's 550 pages, so I'll start to handwrite that out for you, but I also have a summary report, and I have a structural inventory for asset management, and I do have a summary of roadmap for the next 10 years that I definitely can share with council in the near future.
Yeah, maybe something that we could definitely pull this chart up and maybe a little bit of that during our budget talks, as we start to potentially ramp up. Councilor Ward, point, we may not put away $1.4 million in 2024, but we need to include some dollar amount in 2024 as we start to move forward, and, you know, and there's been money put away in the past as well, but let's take a good look, and we can spend some time during our budget talks at that time, so I can direct staff to bring these numbers back to us during that time. All right, any other questions, comments? No? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to move into action requests. First one, 7A, ES 2023-08, Matilda Landfill Capacity Update, CEO Tim Mills.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you, evening, council. So tonight, we're going to talk about the Matilda Landfill Capacity Update, Director of Transportation, Heimland and I, along with our WSP consultant, Jen Brown-Hawn, who's online with us tonight. A couple of comments from me before we get started. We are talking about landfill capacity at Matilda, and we knew this day was going to come. It's actually coming sooner than later. Two and a half years ago or so, there was a presentation by CEO Garrity outlining some options for council to consider, that's included in your, in your package. The 2022 annual report for the landfill is also included in your package, and after reviewing that with staff and seeing some concerning numbers, we asked WSP, and specifically Jen and her team, to come back in July and do a study, further study, to see what the actual capacity was, and then we got the report back at the end of September, and here we are tonight. So I'm going to first turn it over to Jen, to go through some information with you, and then we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for some discussion and questions that certainly you will have.
Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, absolutely, yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, good. You never know with these things, right?
Absolutely.
So thanks, Tim, for introducing me, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council. Thanks for having me here to discuss your landfill needs. The environmental compliance approval for the landfill, for Matilda Landfill, is approved for a total capacity of approximately 276,000 cubic meters, and that would include your daily, your waste, your daily cover, as well as your interim cover, but it's important to note that it does include your file cover, because that will go on top, in some ECA's, some environmental compliance rules, it does include the final cover, so it's important to note that ours actually does not. Our final cover will go on top of this, this value, this is the contour plan. Like Tim alluded to, to ensure that we're within our capacity, we complete surveys alluded to, to ensure that we're within our capacity, we complete surveys on an annual basis typically in December, so that we know how much fill we have produced in a year or brought in in a year, and we compare this from year to year. So this allows us to calculate or estimate the approximate fill rate for the year, the estimated remaining capacity, and then, of course, from that, the estimated remaining lifespan, which is based on that fill rate from that year, that particular year. In 2022, the MECP, they had completed a site inspection of the Matilda landfill, and in their inspection report, among other things, they requested that we produce a final capping plan for the Matilda landfill site. And when we did this, we, of course, took the December topographical, sorry, topographical survey, and we determined how much was filled within the year, and we determined what the lifespan or estimated lifespan was for the site, which came to the end of 2024. This was also reported in our annual report, which Tim indicated. Further to the development of the capping plan and the annual report, like Tim said, they requested that we do confirmation of the value. So we, again, completed a survey in July of this year of the waste mound, which confirmed the remaining mound capacity to be approximately 16,000 cubic meters, which is not very much. We are estimating about a fill rate of, I think, 61,000 to 65,000 cubes per year. So based on this fill rate that we had from January to July, we estimated the lifespan to be approximately 2.2 years. So that gets us to just mid-2025. It should be noted that the landfill capacity was impacted following the closure of the Williamsburg waste disposal site. So all waste that would have gone to the Williamsburg site was then moved to the Matilda site in, starting in 2019. Further to this, there was increased waste volume that went to the landfill in 2021 and 2022, as well as there was an addition of interim cover to approximately three-quarters of the mound. So all of these items end up depleting the mound capacity, the remaining capacity that we have, which, of course, depletes our lifespan of the site. To increase the lifespan, of course, we recommend further compaction of the waste, but in order to do that, we should be removing the interim or daily cover, and then compacting, and then applying more waste, and then reapplying our daily cover. That, it sounds simple, but I know it's not as easy to remove daily cover. Daily cover is approximately 15 centimeters thick, and then the interim cover is 30 centimeters. The interim cover, it's important to note, is required for cells that are not actively being landfilled, which is why there was interim cover applied to three-quarters of the site. So we only have the active area where we're actively landfilling, being open, and receiving the daily cover. Other options, I think Tim has those lined up for you to discuss. Do you have any questions for me at this point, or we want to wait till Tim's done his?
Yeah, no, we can open up for questions. Any current questions for Jennifer Brown-Hahn? Councilor Ward?
Thanks, Jennifer, for the presentation. So I think I have some concerns with the numbers. I talked to Director Hyman earlier today, but, you know, like, we went from having 42,000 cubic meters to 25 in a year, or less than a year.
Yep.
I'm just struggling, because then I read that we didn't account for interim or daily cover, which we would have known at the time would have been required. So were the numbers that were presented in 2021 flawed from the beginning? Like, should that calculation have perhaps been revisited? I just don't understand how we lost 60% of capacity for interim and daily in a year.
Yeah, so the volume that was calculated in 2021, or the capacity, was based on just what was on the waste. It didn't include the interim or daily cover.
But should it?
So it's saying that we should have been removing that, and that would increase our volume.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. And again, thank you for the presentation. I guess, similar to the question that Councilor Ward had, I mean, we had anticipated that the Williamsburg dump was going to be closed, I think probably a couple of years in advance of the reports being finalized. So I'm, again, I'm a little bit surprised that the numbers for the Matilda dump would not have accounted for that closure and the diversion of waste from the, instead of it going to the Williamsburg dump to the Matilda dump. But you're suggesting it wasn't included in the?
No, what I'm saying is that that would have had an impact on our fill rate. So if you were to look at our fill rate in, let's say, 2017 or 2018 for the Matilda site, it was much lower than what it is in 2019 and beyond.
Correct.
I'm just saying, overall, that the closure of that site impacted the landfill capacity. So if we hadn't been including, if we hadn't ended up sending the Williamsburg waste to the Matilda site, our lifespan at Matilda would have been longer. But yes, it is currently in our in our numbers.
Yeah, current numbers, but the numbers previously, it wasn't.
Not prior to 2019.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, where I'm a little bit confused on, I mean, look, I don't want to play old tapes or anything, but I'm just confused on why if we anticipated that the Williamsburg dump was going to be closed, then we knew the numbers from the Williamsburg dump should have been applied to the Matilda dump in order to calculate what the lifespan of the Matilda dump would have been, based on the closure of Williamsburg. But it wasn't until we reconciled the report. Am I correct in understanding that?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Councilor Ward?
I just want to ask another question to Jen. Just looking at the 2018, you know, in 2018, we had 7.1 years. 2019, we suddenly had 2.4, 2020, one year. Then we got the expansion approved in '21, so we went back up to 7.5, which was reconciled back to 3.7, back to 1.9. And I can understand we've accepted more waste, but I'm a little bit hesitant, because some of these numbers are really, unless we're receiving like three, four, or five times the waste all of a sudden, like, we're going from 7.1 to 2.4 to 1, to 7.5 to, like, it seems like it's following, maybe you can explain to me and the rest of council how accurate topographic calculations are and how they fluctuate, not only with the time of year, right? Because there's some heave, like, the waste mound fluctuates in how it's compacted, right? Not only with, so I'm just wondering, like, if you had a particularly, what year you had significant compaction, would that significantly impact your topographic survey?
I think it would have some impact on the result, but we have to also recognize that there was lots of interim cover applied additionally
Right.
over the past couple of years also.
Right, yeah.
And I did have a team go back and revisit all our past surveys to confirm their values, which is why there's a little bit of tweaking there.
Okay.
Further comments? So would you like me to go to the discussion now, the options, some options to consider, and then we can?
Yeah, let's, let's move ahead with that. Certainly, I'll make one comment. Yeah, certainly, you know, disheartening where, you know, in 2021, to Counselor Ward's point, you know, we make a purchase of property, and we think we have 7.5 years left, and, you know, in a short period of time, now we're down to, you know, to less than two years left. So obviously, it's putting some pressure on us to come up with a plan, because obviously we need to have a plan going forward. So I'll leave it at that. CEO Mills?
Just ask one more question, Mayor. Sorry. So Jennifer, just a really, really brief question. So let's say we come up with a technique to remove that 0.3 meters of interim cover, the thickness. Do you guys have an idea of how many years that would bring us back if we were to come up with a plan for that, roughly?
I haven't got a firm calculation for that.
Okay.
I was talking to my colleague about that, and she estimated a year to a year and a half.
Okay.
But if you want that value, I can see if we can extrapolate that somehow.
I think a year, through you, Mayor, sorry, I think a year, a year and a half is worth that, in my opinion. It's worth it. So if we could explore that, Mayor, and have that number come back to, through staff, that'd be great, in my opinion.
Yeah, certainly, in knowing we still need to close this landfill at some point in the future and start another process, you know, every cubic meter we can put there within the law is beneficial to our taxpayers at this point. So that's excellent. Anything we can do even for the next two years, I think, is a strategy we could and should take on. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, just a question for staff, then. Are we removing that cover now and compacting, or is that something in order?
Man, Hyman?
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Sevier. Yeah, in every possible shape and form, we are trying. With, the downfall is with our compactor, it pounds the cover into the actual waste itself. So in times, it is tough to remove, but we are trying.
You are doing, okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I was just going to say to Director Hyman, I could just foresee in the winter trying to remove this, I mean, it would be frozen every morning as you went in, and there'd be, it'd be virtually impossible to try and, to try and rip that back off. It'd almost be impossible, so, yeah.
Yeah, certainly your point, the cost of removing, it's not free either, as much as the transfer, so there's...
And broken equipment and, yeah, exactly.
Point well taken, and of course, snowfall, and we have to deal with in our environment four seasons, right?
Yep.
CEO Mills?
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move to discussion and options. The staff have discussed this. One of the options is to consider a private landfill such as GFL in Moose Creek or Waste Management in Brockville. The regional waste management group is actually visiting GFL, and a number of lower-tier municipalities have also visited with groups on their own. And that would, we would utilize that for all residential curbside waste. Would also require us to have conversations with our, with HGC, who currently provides our pickup for waste and recycling. Okay, so that's first. I don't know if there's comments on that, or, no?
Counselor Ward?
Sorry, I just, process-wise, are we going through all the options, and then we can discuss?
Sure, we can go through the options.
Is that what we're doing? Okay.
Sure, yeah. Why don't we go through all the options, and then we can?
So there are benefits to using a private landfill, which are obvious. Removes the possibility of any further contamination. No ECA or provincial approval required. No additional staffing, so you're looking at resources and staffing or infrastructure. Another thing that council needs to consider is to increase the lifespan of Matilda, is the impact of ICI, or industrial, commercial, and institutional waste, if that was eliminated. So we have to, I'm not telling you how, I'm just saying it's a possibility. And we would like to extend the Matilda landfill as long as possible for residents. I know in the past, we discussed transfer stations, we being, I wasn't here, but we discussed that. Keep in mind also that the, with recycling, that in 2025, with producer responsibility, that will lessen the cost on the municipality for that. That can be, the money with that that we save could be applied to this, and long-term, that would certainly be a consideration that might make sense. And attached, you have the report from 2021, which also outlines the four options that previous administration and council were considering. It's, we've done a 360 here, we're worried about that. So there's, there's...
Go to the options.
There's, well, the landfill expansion, we've been there, transfer station, options, new disposal site, and then what we've discussed is the private disposal sites. So in a, I suppose the easiest option is to transfer all of our waste and not accept ICI, and have the producers for, for the recycling take care of that. And that's just like one, two, three, that's done, but it's not so simple.
Yeah, well, thank you, CEO Mills.
Although it is that simple.
Yeah, it is that simple. Landfill's never simple. Obviously, as we're just learning about this, we've seen the agenda package, you know, we saw the reports coming in, we put together tonight's, you know, these presentation, you know, part of the intent was to, A, make this 100% public, and for discuss it and open council scenarios. Certainly, as we lead into 2024 budget session, which will lead us to 2025, as this also will be a focus point for the council team and then staff, because we have to, we have to have a plan. And we only have ideas on paper. We don't have a plan yet. That being said, comments, questions? Deputy Mayor?
And I'm just scrolling through this again. It's quite a bit to absorb. How much would we save in terms of volume if we eliminate the ICI? Sorry if I didn't say that loud enough. Okay, sorry.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Sevier. Just to put into perspective, there was a house that was damaged by fire. It got brought into our landfill. That takes up a lot of space, because it's tough to compact construction material, right, from a, from a fire or from a house being tore down or a shed being tore down. So that takes up land space. So by eliminating your ICNI, and I know there's neighboring municipalities that do not accept it as well, that's definitely going to increase our useful life of the landfill. And by eliminating the 10 loads of curbside garbage, waste, weekly, that'll definitely increase our landfill capacity for the duration. So then we'll allow you time to put a firm transfer station thought process together, that we wouldn't be under the crunch deadline of our landfill being, coming to its end of its useful life. So to put it, to put a year on, I couldn't put a year on it. I just know that ICNI does take up a lot of space, and it's, it's site-specific. We don't know what the next load is that's going to be coming in to say that.
So we can't estimate a volume of ICI that we receive?
No, in talking with Jennifer through WSP, the best thing that we could do is if council chose to eliminate ICNI, would be, you know, a topography graph, let's say July first, and then do one again August first, or September first?
And Steve?
Differences.
I don't think we can uncover every rock in this scenario, for sure. So I agree, yeah, so every thought process is important.
And I agree.
We need to unturn every stone. We need to calculate every cost to do it to our best of our ability. of our ability, and then decide on a plan moving forward once we receive the full gamut, you know. And I suspect it can be a committee, the whole meeting, and sit here for a couple hours, but, you know, it's an issue not just in South Dundas, it's an issue all over. I think we just have to, we have two and a half years, or maybe less than two and a half years to come up with a plan, and I'd rather do the plan over the next three to four months versus two years.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I was just curious, do we currently accept ICI from other municipalities?
Through you, Mayor Brown, I know we can.
We can.
If, for just to record, do we receive any, any garbage from any other municipalities?
No, we do not.
Okay. Counselor Ward?
Last of a question or a comment. I think this has been kicked down the road several times, and I would hate to continue to do that. So to Deputy Mayor's point, if we want to have a committee of the whole meeting, that's fine, but I do think that this council needs to make a decision. Waste management hasn't been an issue that on a daily basis. So not saying GFL's the answer, but just looking to the experts and seeing how they run their landfills, we're far behind. And, you know, like, we do what we can with what we have. You know, the waste management business is a billion-dollar industry. I don't expect us to be competing with that, but it's just a notion of if we want to open a new landfill or we want to expand landfill, we're going to have to increase that level of service and that standard. So I guess that's my perspective. I think, you know, I'd really like to get some clarification on the transfer station numbers. I think, looking at other municipalities, I'm just going to bring up South Stormont as an example, their waste is trucked to GFL, their curbside waste, and their residents have a small residential depot that they bring their garbage if they have a, you know, they're cleaning out their garage or something. I doubt that their transfer station costs them $4 million, $1.5 to $4 million. So just like a little bit better detail, and through you, Mayor, to staff, if you guys could narrow that down, I think that's really high, it seems to me. But I think if that came back to committee, that might be more palatable than, you know, $4 million, because it makes the expansion look really cheap, and I don't think that that's actually the case. So that's my thoughts, and I'm looking forward to this council making a decision because I do think that it's time, so.
Yes, so honestly, we could debate everything that's happened previously, but to Counselor Ward's point, our prices, let's come up with solutions moving forward. So we could direct staff, a great motion on Counselor's point. The council, direct staff, if you're shooting quips, we're having 25 fees, 3.5 factors for the last staff to bring back reports on pricing on any of these options, and second video, whole meeting. Would that be... Okay, so, by Counselor Ward, time to be there, second day, all the way forward. Good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Hi. So, sorry, you got a quick one?
Um, Mayor Brown, we're having a little bit of difficulty with the audio. The YouTube's just getting up. So wondering if we can do just a quick pause, do reset, to see if we can get that, um, it's not working.
Okay.
Put small screen and start recording. Thanks for your...
Okay, so this is going to be part one of the WSP meeting, of South Dundas, November 27th. We're going to disconnect, and then we can actually part two of this recording.